All right, five seconds. Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you for joining us for the Orange County School Board work session, which has been scheduled for today for the purpose of discussing the OCPS Strategic Plan, District Scorecard, and the Orange County Preparatory Academy School Improvement Plan. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting. No action will be taken, and there will be no pre-agenda period in which the public would normally address the school board on relevant topics that are not related, that are related, always do that, to the work of the board. Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. Board members are attending in person and telephonically, so let me do a quick roll call, starting with Member Gallo. Member Gallo, are you on the line? No, I didn't think we were going to have her. Okay. Member Lopez?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. Member Colbert?
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. Member Gold?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Member Felder?
Top of the day.
Top of the day, ma'am. And Dr. Caster-Dennel? Is she joining us by phone? Okay. Vice Chair?
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. Okay, so we have all but two members joining us today. I want to remind the public that the board... Did somebody just join us? Okay. Member Gallo? No? Okay. Somebody's trying. All right, Victor and team in the back. If there is somebody trying to call in, let us know, okay? Board members are... Went through that. I want to remind the board that board will not be engaging in outside electronics or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus all of our attention on the matters before us. And with that, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to bring to you an update to our strategic plan. Prior to the pandemic, the board went through extensive conversations to renovate the existing strategic plan, included six goals. And then the pandemic hit, and we were temporarily stalled. And so to this afternoon, I'm pleased that our Chief Strategy Officer, Dr. Borden, will be presenting to you the strategic plan with the goals and key performance indicators. We will then be reporting back to the board mid-year and end of year as to the results as it relates to the KPIs. Dr. Borden?
Good afternoon, Chair Jacobs, members of the board, Superintendent Vasquez, and staff. I'm excited to present a status update on the Orange County Public Schools 2025 Strategic Plan with you this afternoon. This afternoon, we will provide an overview of the strategic plan, and then I will discuss the district scorecard key performance indicator outcomes, and then turn it back over to Dr. Vasquez for comments and for board discussion. So as a reminder, the board, as part of the strategic planning process, helped outline our vision, mission, and values and objectives. Our vision is to ensure every student has a promising and successful future. Our mission is with the support of families in the community, we create enriching and diverse pathways to lead our students to success. Our values are innovation, respect, collaboration, integrity, inclusion, and equity. And our objectives are high expectations for student learning, support of student mental and emotional health, high-quality team members, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, engaged and invested community. And I would highlight here, board, that I worked with legal based upon some legislative changes, and so the verbiage for the second objective has changed to support of student mental and emotional health. Our market differentiators are highest-quality academic arts and extracurricular activities, state-of-the-art facilities, innovators in digital learning, recognized for operational excellence in community support, a leader in career and technical education, expansive choices and unique learning opportunities, transparent and accountable to our stakeholders, and that we embrace and celebrate our diverse community. So now for a review of our goals and key performance indicator outcomes. Before I do that, I wanted to familiarize you with the slide format for today. As an example, at the top, you will see our strategic plan, our six objectives across the top. Within those objectives, you will then see the goals, affiliated goals listed. And then beneath that, for each goal, we will review the key performance indicators that the staff is working on to measure our progress with the outcome from last year, the target for this year, and our target for the conclusion of the 2425 current strategic plan. So let's begin by looking at our first objective, which is high expectations for student learning, where we are focused on provide... To provide enriching and diverse pathways that focus on teachers, students, and the curriculum. Within our objective for high expectations for student learning, we have three goals, which are to close the achievement gap, promote early literacy, and offer multiple pathways to success. There are three key performance indicators affiliated with the close the achievement gap goal, and one each for the other two goals. We will now, with detail, review our progress in each of these areas. So for our first goal of close the achievement gap, the first key performance indicator that we are going to look at is reducing the percent of low-performing schools, which is based upon the percent of DNF schools. Our outcome from the 2122 school year was nine out of 223, which is 4%, which is a significant reduction from year prior. Our target for this school year is 2%, and the 2425 concluding target is 0%. Of course, our ultimate goal is that we will have no DNF schools this school year. Our next key performance indicator for closing the achievement gap is to narrow or eliminate the achievement gap in the percent of students meeting state standards in English-language arts. Our 2122 outcomes are indicated, our black or African-American-to-white gap for ELA was 33, our Hispanic-to-white gap was 24, our students with disabilities to non was 39, our English-language learners to non was 25, and our economically disadvantaged-to-non was 22. You can see our target for each area is to continue to reduce each year. I also want to state here, board, that these reduction, this narrowing or an eliminating of the gap is done without a loss at the proficiency level. So it is by ensuring all of our subgroups continue to increase performance and not that we are losing proficiency overall as a district. The next key performance indicator affiliated with our goal of closing the achievement gap is to narrow or eliminate the achievement gap in the percent of students achieving state standards in mathematics. Here you will see our gaps from last year. Our black or African-American-to-white gap was 36, our Hispanic-to-white gap was 24, students with disabilities to non was 34, English-language learners to non was 16, and economically disadvantaged to non was 21. Again, our goal is to reduce... Continue to reduce with our target this year and every year subsequent through 2425. That brings us to our second goal for high expectations for student learning, which is to promote early literacy. Here, our key performance indicator that we are looking at is to increase the percent of third-grade students achieving at grade-level or above performance on the statewide assessment in English-language arts. We concluded last year at 54%. We are looking to be back at 57% this year with a concluding target of 64%. And I neglected to say earlier, board, and so I would say it now, and we'll talk a little bit more about this at the conclusion, but each of these key performance indicators are worked on by a working group or more across our organization. And they are currently developing division scorecards, which will have internal metrics which lead up to these culminating district scorecard outcomes. Our third goal for high expectations for student learning is to offer multiple pathways to success, and the key performance indicator affiliated is to increase participation and performance in meaningful accelerated ways. The way we measure that is through our middle-school acceleration rate and our college and career acceleration rate. Our middle-school acceleration rate is based upon two factors. It's based upon how the students did last year in high school courses, and then also how they did on industry certifications, but that lags by a year. So this outcome from 2122 for middle school is a combination of last year and year prior. For college and career acceleration, that lags fully by a year, and so that is... It's on last year's outcome, but it's really from the 2021 school year. Our next objective of our strategic plan is support of student mental and emotional health, where we acquire and apply self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Our goal for support of student mental and emotional health is to develop character, including self-awareness, self-management, resiliency, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and conflict. Our key performance indicators for this goal are to increase students' positive perceptions of classroom and school-wide culture, and increase teachers' self-reported student mental and emotional health knowledge and skills. So let's review each key performance indicator and how our outcomes from last year. So for increasing students' positive perceptions of classroom and school-wide culture, grades three through five, we culminated with 62%, grades six through eight, 34%, and grades nine through 12, 32%. I do want to add here, board, that moving forward, we will be surveying fourth through 12th graders. So we are currently getting the fourth through fifth grade data from Panorama, and we will update that in the scorecard so that as we compare it moving forward, we're comparing fourth and fifth to fourth and fifth. And this is measured on the annual Panorama survey that our students take. Our next key performance indicator is to increase teachers' self-reported student mental and emotional health knowledge and skills. This is also captured on the Panorama survey that our teachers are... That take annually. And we ended at 76% last year, and we... Our target this year is 80% with a culminating 82% in 2425. Our next objective for our strategic plan is our dedicated and high-quality team. We have three goals affiliated: attract high-quality candidates for career opportunities throughout OCPS, develop and retain effective and diverse personnel, and promote employees' well-being. Each goal has one affiliated key performance indicator that we will review at this time. So for the goal of attracting high-quality candidates for career opportunities throughout Orange County Public Schools, our key performance indicator is to increase the efficiency of recruitment efforts by diversifying touchpoints to include both in-person and virtual connections. Our outcome from last year was 672, up over prior year. Our target this year is 690, with a concluding target of 725. Our next goal is to develop and retain effective and diverse personnel. Our key performance indicator is to increase the retention rate of instructional and non-instructional personnel. We concluded last year at 84%. Our target for this year is 88.6, and we will culminate with a 90% in 2425. Our next goal is to promote employees' physical and emotional well-being for our dedicated and high-quality team objective. And our key performance indicator here is to increase the use of district wellness resources. It's important to note that our benefits plan runs from October till September annually, so we have not cured the results of the last quarter yet. Those typically arrive in November, and so we do expect these outcomes will move up, and we will update them accordingly at that time. So for our wellness visits, which pertains to all of our employees who are in our benefits program, we had 35%. Our breast cancer, cervical cancer, and colon cancer screenings are done over a two-year period, the percentage is based upon, and there are ages affiliated with each screening. And so for breast cancer screenings, we were at 69%. Cervical cancer screenings, we were at 64%, and colon cancer screenings were at 43%. And you can see our targets are to continue to further our work in each of these areas over this year and the next two years of the strategic plan. For positive climate and safe environment, which is our fourth objective, we want to create the conditions for learning and growth by providing a safe environment for students and adults. Here are, within our goal of maintaining safe, healthy, and inclusive learning and working environments, we have two key performance indicators. The first one is to increase the district's internal and external satisfaction rating, and the second is to increase students' self-reported sense of belonging at their school. So let's take a look at those with some more detail. So for increasing the district's internal and external satisfaction rating, which is known as our net promoter score, we are looking at our stakeholders who have rated us negatively, which is known as our detractors. And we are looking to reduce that number annually through our work. We were at 34% outcome for last year. We are... We are... Our target for this year is 26% with a concluding target of 20%. Our next key performance indicator is increasing our students' self-reported sense of belonging at their school for grades... And again, we will be... This will be a four-through-five survey moving forward, and so we will update this data when we receive it for fourth and fifth from Panorama. Last year, grades three through five, we were at 66%. Grades six through eight, 36%, and grades nine through 12, 31%. I would highlight here and take a moment to highlight that currently, we have 14 secondary schools that principal supervisors have chosen schools, and principals have wanted to participate in a thought exchange with their students. That is actually... Was running last week and concludes this Friday. And from that, students are telling us what we can do to help them feel more connected at school. And so the early input on that has been excitement from some of the principal supervisors and principals, that they're really going to be able to respond to the voice and agency of our students and move this metric moving forward. Our next objective for our strategic plan is efficient operations, where we look to streamline processes, optimize business performance, and manage our resources responsibly. Within efficient operations, we have a goal of delivering high-quality service by maximizing resources so we can support identified needs. For that goal, we have four key performance indicators that we will review in detail at this time. The first key performance indicator is to increase the amount of available resources through innovation and collaboration. Through our rebate program last year with our negotiated contracts, we were able to attain $280,135, and we look to continue to move that amount forward, culminating with at least $300,000 annually by 2425. Our next key performance indicator is to increase a high-quality and responsive customer service experience. This is conducted with our staff who need support with technology. They were... Every 10th one receives a survey after they have received service, and they rate their experience. And we were at 87% satisfied last year. We're looking to move to 90 for the current year with a culminating objective of 95%. Our next key performance indicator is we are looking to reduce custodial costs per square foot. And here, we had an outcome of $1.80 per square foot. Our target this year is $1.76 per square foot with the culminating target of $1.69 per square foot, with certainly maintaining our high expectations for the appearance and cleanliness of our school buildings. Our next key performance indicator is to reduce the number of classroom portables. We had significant reduction here from 1,524 to 1,446, and our target... Concluding target is 1,242 classroom portables. That takes us to our final objective of the 2025 strategic plan, which is to have an engaged and invested community where we leverage the time, talent, and resources of our community to support student success. Within that objective, our goal is to provide a community-wide network of support for students and families. We have three key performance indicators, and let's review each of those at this time. Our first one is to increase the total number of volunteers and partners in education. We concluded with 42,290 volunteers, 2,713 partnerships, and our concluding targets are for 45,320 volunteers with 3,226 partnerships. Our next key performance indicator is to increase the total dollars raised by the foundation for Orange County Public Schools. We increased from a little over 3.2 million to 3.6, and our culminating goal is 4 million annually by the 2425 school year. Our final key performance indicator is to increase opportunities for stakeholders to provide feedback across all of our Orange County Public School divisions. And our outcome from last year, we had 251 opportunities where stakeholders could provide feedback. We're looking to increase that by 10% each year, culminating with 334 opportunities for feedback in the 202425 school year. So I would conclude by stating again that every one of our key performance indicators has a working group that works on it. They are by November 7th, they are developing their intern- They are, by November seventh, they are developing their internal division scorecards, where we will measure our progress three times annually, and the board will receive updates on those metrics, as well as how we're, how those are leaning towards the district scorecard throughout the school year. So, thank you for your time, and I turn it back to Dr. Vescus.
Thank you, Dr. Boarder, for the work in putting this together. Madam Chair, we are now open for questions from the board. Thank you, Dr. Vescus. Member Gould.
Excellent presentation. Of course, we've been through the strategic plan before. It's nice to see the indicators continue to move mostly in the right direction, in spite of the challenges the last couple of years. And it'll be interesting to see how we move them forward. On the slide, it's in the more recent part of the deck that you have for volunteers and the goal in two thousand and twenty, that one. Does that include additions, the volunteers from Disney who come in and do projects, the Rotary Clubs, the Boy Scouts, or is that only like our in-school? And does this also include our mentors? I just want to try to understand what this compels.
No, that's a great, great question, Ms. Gould, and I will respond with our, our current methodology, and if that does not answer the question, please let me know, and we'll, we'll do further work to get back to you. So, our calculation methodology is to, we're looking at the number of addition school volunteers and partners in education. A volunteer is any non-paid individual who gives time to a teacher, school, school board of Orange County, employee, or board department. And duties assigned to volunteers are consistent with Florida statutes and State Board of Ed rules. These are individuals who have registered to volunteer, selected a volunteer assignment, have been screened, and have been placed in a volunteer assignment by a school volunteer coordinator or district program coordinator. They participate in volunteer assignments, sign in and out of the Samaritan at the school's front office, which is then used to track all of those hours.
Okay, so, since you read that one, could you also read what makes up partnerships to see if we captured the others in there?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. Partners in education, these are our businesses, organizations, and occasionally, individuals who have chosen one or more schools with which to partner, and have committed to doing at least three partnership activities, such as donating resources or volunteers, providing skills or incentives with their partner schools. The partnership activities to which they have committed are recorded in Samaritan by our partners in education coordinator.
Great, thank you. That, that helps. That number for partnerships, based on those definitions, the kind of have to register to get in the school versus supporting the school in overweight, seems kind of low, and I don't know how we capture it all, because I can think of every Rotary, every Boys and Girl Scouts that does a project, you know, Indian Guides, I know we did those school-based projects. I just want to make sure we're not missing that, because that's an important part of our fabric of connectivity. Plus, it's our own kids often helping our own kids, which I think is an essential for character building. So, it, and I would love to know, and I don't know that we need to measure it, but maybe just track it, how many of our own students volunteer within the schools and do program mentoringship, you know, go from the high school to the elementary or middle school, and do tutoring or coaching? And there's just all kinds of cool things that I think that are happening that are what makes a society a society, and not just a place to live, you know? It's, it's a great place to live. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gould, for those comments. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Member Gould. Member Lopez.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. About the, the teachers' shortage, do we have more plans that, what was the, the slide?
Is it, is it develop and retain effective and diverse personnel, Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Excellent.
So, the, the, what are the initiatives that we see short-term and long-term to alleviate the, the shortage of teachers and the retention of our teachers?
So, Ms. Lopez, this is a great question. I would also highlight here that when it comes to our teachers, this overall outcome is instructional and non-instructional personnel. Our classified retention rate last year was seventy-seven percent. And so, we are certainly aware of our need in the marketplace to compete with other opportunities. And so, we are looking at that closely across all divisions in conjunction with human resources. We will continue to, of course, have our job fairs, continue to strengthen our partnerships, which are extensive right now with our local universities, in looking for a candidate, candidates to recruit and retain. I know HR is, is always looking at the marketplace to ensure that we're offering the most competitive package that we can for our teachers.
Do, do we have any type of plan to recruit teachers across the nation or in another countries?
So, Ms. Lopez, we, I, I will get back to you with specifics. I can tell you that we have partnered with organizations and continue to partner with organizations where we have job fairs annually, looking at international teachers who come to work with us. And across the nation, there are also job fairs that we attend in person and virtually across the nation. HR had over one hundred events last year regarding recruitment and retention. And so, I can provide you the breakdown of specificity on that if you would like.
With instructional personnel?
Yeah, they had, well, that's, that's conclusive of instructional and non-instructional.
Yeah, I would like to see that, because I saw their counties providing opportunities, you know, because they don't have, for example, Oceola. Oceola hire another, you know, a company, so they can hire teachers from, from other coun, countries. I don't, I don't know what is the feedback from that.
Madam Chair, may I?
Absolutely.
Yes, so, we currently work with EPI to recruit international teachers. Wendy Ivory is also working with an organization focused on bringing us teachers who specialize in teaching students with disability. And Dr. Williams is also looking into other companies that may be able to help us with that recruitment effort similar to EPI.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you. And also, what, in, in the efficient operations, what, when you said reduce custodial cost per square foot, what that means? I'm sorry.
No, great, great question. So, if we look at that through the school lens, we're looking at a school, and how much square footage there is to clean across that campus, and how many custodians we have, cost of personnel plus supplies. And that's the, that's how they determined custodial cost per square foot. Certainly, we, we would like to look at it more closely at the district scorecard level. As you know, we have some schools that are centralized now and decentralized, because we are looking to continuously improve. And we also heard feedback from our stakeholders, our school leaders, and so, we are look, we, we've applied a hybrid model this year, and so, facilities really wants to take a look at the custodial cost per square foot. And internally, we'll be able to look at centralized, decentralized. They're also going to be looking at custodial inspections at the schools to ensure that the level of service is sustained and where we want it to be for, for our students to be, for our schools to be outstanding places for learning.
Trying to be friendly with the terminology, because I think that everybody that is listening to us is understanding. So, that doesn't mean that we have janitors having more work and, you know, more work, but, you know, less salary, or, you know, impacted in the, in the, in the amount of work that they're going to have in the school. What, what is that, what, what it means? You know, it, it will be, you know, nice to have a more simple terminology.
I'm glad you asked that question. It's a great question. So, our methodology that we use for determining the number of custodians at a school site is not, that's not, that's not being lowered. So, the number of positions that schools have, that is sustained. This is looking at that plus the cost of supplies, and what our costs are per square foot, and then, do we have opportunities to reduce that? For example, with the reduction in portables at school sites, that may lend itself to needing less personnel, because when you have more portables, it's more square footage, which could generate additional personnel. But this metric itself is, is not attached to any, any reducing of the amount of square footage needed to generate positions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, great question.
If I can ask you a question, was that the five-minute timer? Okay.
So, sorry, so, I just, I just.
Go again. Okay, we'll come back?
Thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
Thanks, Ms. Lopez.
Member Bird, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and all the work that has gone into it. I know that this was a lot of work, so, I appreciate it. We had a good discussion when we met. I think there was a couple of things that I had asked you that you were possibly going to find some results on, and I, I think I captured, I think I remembered, but I want to say it was the retention rate and how that compares to other school districts, and also, if we had previous year's retention rates.
So, great question, Ms. Bird, and let me flip back there and then pull out my notes, because I do have prior-year retention rates for you that, that I was able to get. Okay, so, thanks again for the question, Ms. Bird. So, prior-year retention rates for eighteen, nineteen was eighty-six point one percent. Nineteen, twenty was eighty-seven point nine, and twenty-twenty-one was eighty-seven point one. And then, this past year was eighty-four. I would, would add in there again that the, our classified retention rate was seventy-seven percent. And so, that, that is, that was part of that as well. And so, yes, that's the prior-year data. As far as how we compare nationally, I will get back to you. We're still working on that data to see not how we compare nationally to other school districts, and also, how we compare to other organizations as well across central Florida.
Good, thank you. On the employees' well-being, let me try to get to that slide.
So, the, are you talking about the internal and external satisfaction rating, or the wellness of our employees?
The wellness.
Excellent.
We talked about promoting, the goal says promote employees' physical and emotional well-being, but the KPI is really focused on their physical well-being. So, I'm just, it almost seems as if we need another KPI in there of a way that we can monitor their emotional well-being, because I know it's been a very difficult and trying few years for our teachers, so, and our, all of our employees. So, I would like to see us somehow monitor that, and I don't know how we do that, but that would be my request.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Bird, for that. We'll definitely take that back and have a discussion on, on how we can look to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, and then, almost the same kind of thing for the safe environment, positive climate and safe environment. Most of those, I felt like were focused on positive climate, which I know is a huge focus of ours right now, but I've, I'm wondering how we're monitoring safe environment? Or, I guess it could be said that if kids have a good sense of belonging feeling and they're, and they're doing well, that, you know, that creates a safer environment overall, but, but I'm just wondering how we can monitor how safe the school environments are.
No, I appreciate the question, Ms. Bird. We're actually working on our questions for this year with Panorama right now, so, it's great timing. I can tell you that for this metric, they are asked five questions, which then go into this overall rating. And the five questions are how often are you excited, do your teachers seem excited to be teaching their classes? At your school, how much does the behavior of other students hurt or help your learning, which kind of speaks to, to that? How pleasant or unpleasant is the physical space at your school? How fair or unfair are the rules for the students at the school? And how positive or negative is the energy of the school? So, those are currently the five questions, which then go into the overall ratings that you see, see here.
Okay, thank you. And then, I think finally, I'm just going to kind of echo what Member Lopez said about the custodial services one, and, and I express this to you as well, my concern for this. I, I, I would, and you mentioned something just a few minutes ago, that you're also going to be monitoring, and I can't remember the word you used, contractual execution, maybe, or some word you used where you're going to be checking how well the custodial services are being done?
So, part of the internal metric that they are working on right now, that they're finalizing in their scorecards, when I met with the facilities team, they have a focus on the custodial inspections that are done on regular intervals at the school to ensure that those are being sustained at a high level, and when there are opportunities to make adjustments, that those are done with priority, and that that impact, in other words, there's not, the goal is not to reduce custodial per square footage cost at the expense of losing the quality of service that we expect to provide to our, to our schools, and our schools expect us to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One of them is probably going to sound a little nitpicky, and I'm sorry I didn't, well, we didn't have a chance to meet before, but the last word in your goal is conflict, the one on the, on the screen right now. So, we're talking about developing character, developing resiliency, developing relationship skills, and developing conflict. So, I think we need conflict resolution or something at the end of that conflict.
Agreed, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I think our kids have already got the developing conflict down.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I noticed it as I read it, too, and, yes, so.
Some are better at it than others.
I appreciate the feedback, it's needed.
If I can take you back to, we just talked about this a minute ago, but retention rate, one concern that I have there, and I don't, I think there's probably a maximum possible or reasonable retention rate, depending upon where our teachers are in the life cycle, and I don't have that information to know how many are approaching retirement age. So, I would just ask that, and you have probably looked at it, but make sure that we put that in that context so that it's a realist goal. You know, I mean, and then you get kind of like to the cliff, we did at the county anyway, we knew we were going to lose a lot of really valuable employees in a certain year, and so, there's nothing you can really do about that. So, if you didn't already, which I'm sure you did, take a look at that. And then, my last, under the goal of maintain safe, healthy, and inclusive learning and working environments, under the twenty-one, twenty-two, we have thirty-five percent detractors. How did you measure that?
So, the thirty-four percent detractors, Chair Jacobs, if you give me.
Yeah, just the detractors in general, how is that measured?
So, so, in general, that is measured, so, you're looking at a zero-through-ten survey score. And the way the net promoter score works is if, if we're rated nine or ten, it counts as a positive. If we are rated seven or eight, that's actually considered passive and does not count, it's neutral. If we're rated zero through six, it's considered a detractor. And so, then, the percentages are, you, you subtract your positives and your, your negatives. And so, that's, that's to get the net promoter score. I will tell you, our net promoter score was five. However, I would also say this, that from the organization itself, it says that a net promoter score above zero is good. And then, it goes all the way up to, you know, outstanding. know, outstanding, but having a net promoter score above zero, um, the affiliation behind us considers that good. With that said, uh, we don't, we certainly are focused on ensuring our percentage of detractors continues to decrease. So here, Chair Jacobs, every division, uh, works on three of these metrics. Uh, they are working on this one across all divisions in the organization, um, the DNF schools, and then also the opportunities to provide feedback. So, every division will have an internal scorecard here with metrics on, on how we are working to improve the internal and external satisfaction. Um, and I'm not sure that answers your question.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not, you may have answered it at the very beginning. So, is this a survey that we send out to all parents, students, and teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, this, this is the, this is a survey, and where this is comprised of is there's one question for our students, which is, would you recommend your school to another student? For our families, would you recommend Orange County Public Schools to another family? And for our employees, would you recommend Orange County Public Schools as a place of employment to somebody else?
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question.
Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Let's go to Member Cobert.
Thank you, Chair. So, this one is a follow-up on Member Gould's question about volunteers and partnerships, and it also is relevant to what Member Lopez was talking about with retention of employees. And we have shortages across the board, um, and we can use all the help that we can get, and it, it just was brought to my attention last week that our retiring employees cannot volunteer for a year after they retire. And that, that's a, that's an enormous amount of potential retirees that we're missing out on. That's in state statute, that's not within the district, but I wanted to bring that to the attention of the board because I think that that's a problem that can be solved. Okay? I have already been in touch with the Florida School Boards Association and some lobbyists up in Tallahassee to see if this is something that we can have resolved, because it alarms me that with my impending retirement, I won't be able to volunteer in my child's school. And I've since talked to some teachers that said, yes, I wanted to work on teacher appreciation at my former school, and I had to sit out for a year, and after a year, sometimes we're gonna lose them. So, I think this is a problem that we can solve, and I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Yeah, that's a well of employ, of, of volunteers that we're missing out on, and an opportunity that I see.
So, does that mean if you knew that, you would've stayed around a little longer?
Ah, I'm trying to find some way to be here.
Yeah. We, we support that. Member Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, no, I, I just wanna also to say, you know, about the, the support for students and staff, um, mental and emotional health, that is something really, really good. I like that part. And also, the surveys for, um, to have feedback, you know, from, uh, about customer service. Uh, I, I didn't hear that before, maybe we have it, but I did, no, no, at least, um, when I was a teacher, I think it's a great idea. Um, and also have that control, so, you know, we have accurate information as well. I, I like that, you know, by not having certain amounts in 30 days, so I, I like that part. So, um, I have, um, the last, my, my last question is about mentorship programs. How can we, if we could, um, guarantee, um, mentorship programs across the district in Title I schools? Because sometimes I don't see any type of mentorship in schools that, for example, in, in District Two, you know, have the same achievement gaps of, of other, um, you know, other districts and, and not having mentorship programs. How can, can we, um, provide the mentorship programs, um, across our district? So, our, you know, um, Title I schools and schools that we know are having a lot of challenges can, can, can receive that help and, and that support. And sometimes we only look at transformation, you know, I, at, at the school that are having a really bad grade, but why we don't see also to those schools that can be even better, you know, from C to an A, or maybe, and I, I don't like to put grades, I, I'm against, against grades, but I have to say that, just to look in a certain way, you know, how to, to challenge, um, not challenge, but at least, you know, to provide, um, more, more help. Um, I, I remember, um, having conversation with my students, saying, you know, we have different, different type of students, okay? The student who know how, how to swim, the student that just float because they don't know where to go, and the students that are just drowning in the water. And sometimes we provide services for the students that doesn't know how to swim and they're drowning, but the students that are just floating there, what are we doing for them? And, and, and I think that way maybe to be visual, um, in a certain way as a teacher, mine, I guess. Um, and, you know, the students that know how to swim, yeah, they're always there, receiving all the prizes, you know, that's great, good job, and, and they can inspire the other students, and it's great to have, um, those students, of course, it's, it's great to have every single student, but we have to find a way to help the, the people that are floating also how to swim, you know? I, I don't know if that makes sense. I just try to be, um, graphic or visual in, in, in this term. So, what are we doing in the strategic plan to help all the schools that are in need? Because I know that costs money with mentorship programs, and I don't know if we are looking for partnerships that can support, um, Orange County Public Schools, because we have a lot of people that wants to, to have business with OCPs, with billions of dollars. So, I, I guess they can also help in a, in a way. I, I tried to advocate for mentorship programs since 2018 in District Two. Um, and, and, you know, we have a lot of challenges by finding the money or funding the staff, and, but what about, um, looking for partnerships to have mentorship programs across our district? What are we doing? What are we gonna do?
So, that's a great, great, um, great feedback, Ms. Lopez, for us as a staff to, to look at. We do have, um, mentorship as a priority right now, and so I certainly can provide back to you, um, our current mentorships, um, numbers by, by schools, and we, and that also will give us data to look at. Relative to the district scorecard, um, those division scorecards are being developed right now, um, but your feedback is great because as we're developing those division scorecards, um, I could see mentorship being something we want to look at in multiple metrics, right? So, narrowing our achievement gaps, um, increasing our students' sense of belonging, increasing our students' perceptions of climate and culture, um, our internal and external satisfaction rating, I mean, just, that's five right there, and I'm sure there's many more. And so, as we develop those division scorecards, uh, we'll keep the comments about mentoring at the forefront, and, um, and then I also can work with, um, the, the departments to let you see the current data on mentorships and the number of mentors that we have across our schools. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. You recognized. You pushed it so long ago.
I did. I pushed it so long ago. But I believe that Dr. Boarder did respond when, um, uh, Board Member Byrd was asking about some of the metrics, um, and data that we're using to track, and the district scorecard points to the Panorama survey, but each individual division has a scorecard with different metrics that would lead us to the goal on our, um, district scorecard. So, they may be looking, um, at the number of, um, discipline referrals, they may be looking at attendance, they might be looking, um, at the number of counseling, small group session, or restorative practice circles. So, there are other metrics within each of the division scorecards that lead us to the metrics on the district scorecard. The same thing with mentoring.
Thank you. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, and, uh, Dr. Boarder, thank you so much for your presentation, and of course, I had a lot of my questions when you met with me, but, uh, when I asked you, if you look on page 24, the key performance indicator, increase the district's internal and external satisfaction rating, I asked the question then, how are you going to do this? Um, and I'm sure you probably have answered it throughout, other questions that other board members have been asked, concerned about, but one of my concerns, uh, as we're taking, uh, doing the data and looking at the outcomes and the target, uh, ratings, are we, have we included, uh, alternative education? The reason why I ask that question because it, alternative ed, we have students that are, they're 33rd or juvenile, the, the population varies and it changes, and it's probably very difficult for, uh, us to kind of get some data that's going to stick, but when you spent a lot of time talking about the mental, uh, emotional, um, concerns, uh, I guess, I've spent some time since my time on the board in this year at some of the alternative ed schools that, uh, I, uh, that are in my district, and I have seen some wonderful things that we've done, uh, at some of the, uh, alternative ed centers, and I, that's something that, um, I want us to seriously, as a district, um, keep that up, and we could possibly, with the kinds of programs we have, we probably could be a leader in the state in terms of how we handle, uh, our alternative ed setting. Uh, also, sometimes as a teacher, because some of my early teaching experiences along with Dr. Bridget Williams, we were at an alternative setting. You can get burnt out. You can, and, um, but the same token, uh, again, I share the same sentiment with my fellow board members, with teachers that retire. Why, I don't know, and Pam, uh, Member Gould explained, and said, we can't get a policy that's gonna go against the state statute, because I'm like, look, change the policy, but of course it has to, we have to coincide, yeah, we have to coincide with state statute, but that is a real concern because we are such a large district, and we are, uh, a diversified district, and I want, I'm hoping that all of this data that you have included, um, alternative ed, and then to those members of the alternative ed administration and staff, to let them know that you're not out on an island, sometimes you may feel that way, uh, that, uh, we, we understand, and we're wanting you, we're wanting the students that you service to get the best possible, um, help in educational experience, because I can't stop talking about it, that moment, that time I was at, oh, is it OIA? Orange Sun, Orange something. What is it?
OIA.
OIA, yes. That short day I was there, I just, I experienced some of the things the students were saying, it just took me to another level in terms of their gratefulness and, and their ambition and understanding that what they have done is something that they shouldn't have done, but now they're ready to do some other things. So, I'm sure across the district, we can have that kind of thing, and it's important that our teachers in those programs and administrators understand, continue to understand the seriousness of dedicated work as a faculty member and an administrator, and really be there. And if you are at a point where you're burnt out, that we are offering, I know we do at the district, we do have emotional and mental, uh, help for teachers, um, so they can, uh, either stay in that position, or we can suggest that you probably find some other area that you can work in to find some success. And I, if I look on page, let me see, 16, I think it was? I probably have already handled 16, but I just, uh, let me just make sure I did cover that. Oh, yeah, um, and alternative ed, uh, and I know we're talking about, you know, our other schools too. It says increase students' positive perceptions of classroom and school-wide culture. I seriously hope that we are serious about this piece right here, because this, this could change the trajectory of hundreds of students, teachers too, their lives, and the whole perception of what education is about. I know my time is up, but one more thing, and I'm gonna shut up. Uh, that's so important, and I hope that we take that seriously, and we really work, uh, toward that. I may have to come back later, but that is something that I am very, uh, concerned about, and know that that is something that we need to really work on a higher and better outcome. I see the targets you've, you know, get, given our, us some great targets to help us with that, but we need to stay on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Gould.
Um, I, just quickly, I wanted to circle back to, to mentoring opportunities. Um, I, we sometimes think of mentoring in a very traditional way, right, where somebody is meeting with, uh, a young person for an hour here and there, and they might be helping them with tutoring and homework. Some of the best mentoring happens through part-time jobs, and there's a workforce shortage, there's inflation, um, and it's great skills building. So, how can we help students match maybe to some part-time jobs where they will not only meet mentors through that, but they will also learn some skills through that and balance, obviously balance their curricular and extracurricular at the same time? But employers are hungry, they'll work with us, so I think that's a wonderful way to fit that in, and maybe we even have a class for those employers that, that has an approach with, uh, the students that we feed into their workforce to be able to kind of check in with them, questions they'd ask each week, things that they can do, um, give them little tiny mini three-question things to answer, you know, something quick and easy, but that's just a thought.
Uh, thanks, Ms. Gould and Ms. Felder for the feedback. Um, Ms. Gould, um, you know, I think the opportunity is ripe for that as well because, um, now students, um, can get their, um, hours for Bright Futures via work as well, so we certainly can look at our, um, educational components with that to tie into the, the need, um, in the, in, in the market. And Ms. Felder, um, thanks for, to you for your comments as well. Um, I will tell you that annually, uh, we have the survey data by, um, school, so every site gets to see their survey data, um, for their school. Um, we, we ask schools to look at that as they develop their school improvement plan goals for the following year, so that's part of our continuous improvement model process. Um, and then we also, as an organization, look at it across all areas as well. So, great feedback on that, and, um, we definitely will take that into account, um, when we're looking at these division scorecards and updating the board on how we're doing at our alternative ed sites.
Thank you so much.
All right. That, um, ends our, Member Gould, did you have any follow-up question?
No.
Okay. That ends our, um, comments. Dr. Vasquez, anything else? Okay. Um, Ms. Emboll, do we need to adjourn this meeting and, um, start the rule development meeting, or can we roll right into the rule development?
Do the charter school?
Charter, your charter. So, your policy says it can't start any earlier than 4:30? Right. Um, I don't know how long the charter school presentation is.
15 minutes.
Okay. But it's after 4:30, so, so.
10 minutes.
So, can we just.
Doesn't require, your, your policy, JC, which governs your school attendance area, does not require you to start at 4:30, it just says you can't start beyond 4:30, or earlier than 4:30.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying, is after 4:30, so can we start the charter school?
Yes.
And we don't have to adjourn this meeting and come back in session? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. I don't know. Booty? You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of school board, Dr. Vasquez, Superintendent. So, for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll share that Orange County Prep Academy was chartered in 2014 and has been in operation for eight years. For the 2122 school year, the school's state accountability grade was a D. Pursuant to Florida statutes, one, zero.
Moody, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of school board, Dr. Vasquez, Superintendent. So for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll share that Orange County Prep Academy was chartered in 2014 and has been in operation for eight years. For the 2122 school year, the school's state accountability grade was a D. Pursuant to Florida statutes 1008.34, a charter school that receives a school grade of D or F must develop a, must develop and submit a school improvement plan to its sponsor. So that's why we're here this afternoon. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kia Scott with the School Choice Office that, and she'll introduce our guest from Orange County Prep Academy. Dr. Scott?
Protocol having been established, good afternoon, everyone. Just to give you a brief, a brief reason as to why we're here regarding the SIP. We haven't done this in years. But statute does require that a school that receives a school grade of a D or F present their school improvement plan to you. And as an independent charter school, it gets hard because we can't really provide, we can't tell them how to fix whatever issues they have. What is required, though, is that the school board approve their plan. So in digging into the administrative code, what it says is that the school board can deny a plan if the components of the school improvement plan aren't met. And in this particular instance, Margaret Almo is with us, she is with our School Choice Department, and she has been working closely with the schools as a former principal, former ESE specialist. She has been working one-on-one with the school, and she's going to kind of explain what our role was because we don't want to overstep and.
And if you can speak directly into the mic, it'll be easier for us to hear you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board, and Superintendent Vasquez. At the School Choice Office, we provide the support and guidance and oversight to the schools. Through the SIP process, we ensure that they meet the components that are outlined by the rule. OCPA has completed their plan on the SIMS platform. They are here to appear before the sponsor and have submitted their plan by the due date per the rule. And they have put together a presentation for you based on their SIP. Today, we have Principal Teresita Nieves, representative of the governing board, Detrea Elsner, and also their Vice President of Curriculum and Instruction, Tiffany Richmond, along with their Vice President of Organizational Development, Kenneth Green. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Jacobs and members of the Board and Superintendent. Thank you for having us and giving us this time. I'll be brief, and here we go. Yes, thank you. Okay, we've already been introduced here. On the screen, you'll see the members of my administrative team at the school. We, I'd like to begin the presentation with some celebrations. We are very proud of the fact that in this past year, even with the difficulties coming back from COVID, we focused on trying to make student learning gains, and 50% of our students demonstrated learning gains on the spring math FSA. And 74% of our students were proficient in civics, which was a huge gain from our previous year. On this screen, we have our demographics. OCPA has been historically a C school. When we returned to in-person school after the pandemic shutdown happened, we saw a decrease in student achievement, which brought us down to the D. Last year, we focused on making learning gains, and this year, we continue to focus on making consistent learning gains towards proficiency as we return to normalcy. I'll be sharing six goals with you from our SIP. Our first goal has to do with retention of teachers, not just teachers, instructional and non-instructional personnel. Our goal is to have 80% retention of teachers for next year. We feel that that is a major contributing factor to student achievement. Our strategy is to increase support for new teachers, including teacher development, mentoring, and administrative support. Our action steps that are listed include weekly teacher morale-boosting activities, social-emotional learning lessons and incentives, curriculum support provided by the coaches, monthly PEDs based on teacher interests, and using compassion, satisfaction, and fatigue survey to, results to target teachers that need extra support. We have, I've listed underneath each section the progress we've made so far from the beginning of the year towards these goals. Our second goal has to do with the subgroup of ELL students. Our goal is that 35% of ELL students will make learning gains in ELA, and 50% of ELL students will make learning gains in math. Our strategy focuses on developing basic phonemic awareness, developing basic encoding skills with explicit instruction, and promoting reading fluency. Action steps include providing professional development to teachers using the ILL program, the components of Envision, our math curriculum, that are related to ELL students, and the components in Science, our Science curriculum Elevate, that also relate to ESOL students. We're providing in-house professional developments for all teachers and interventionists that focus on instructional strategies for ELL students. And we're tracking, tracking the progress of ELL students as they progress to, from baseline to our progress monitoring and benchmark testing and providing intervention support when needed during small group instruction. We're also conducting walkthrough observations that will be done by the administration during push-in and pull-out interventions to ensure fidelity. Our third goal is to increase proficiency in ELA from 40% to 55%. Our strategy is to provide targeted instruction incorporating vocabulary and comprehension strategies into all content areas to help reading, to help, I got stuck, to help increase reading strategies across the curriculum. Differentiate instruction, multiple opportunities for reading, both academic and for pleasure, and through, by integrating reading across the curriculum. Action steps towards this goal include providing professional development on our curriculum, Savas. Well, the company itself will be providing PD on the use of ILL 45. Teachers will also continue to learn about the best standards and use their data of the standard to plan specifically to target student growth. And we'll be progress monitoring with ILL 45 and topic tests, and we'll be looking at retakes in order to compare for standards mastery. We will also be doing teacher data chats, and teachers will complete a data protocol summary at each data chat where we will make connections between their decision-making for instruction and the results that the students are getting on those tests. Our fourth goal is to increase proficiency from 31% to 55% proficiency in mathematics. The strategies that the school is going to be implementing will include, but not limited to, differentiated instruction, flexible grouping, ongoing progress monitoring, and intervention. Similar action steps are being taken in math as in ELA in the sense that we are providing professional development on Success Maker from the company, which is Savas. They are also going to be continuing to learn about the best standards, and teachers are going to be working through the planning process with instructional coach on a weekly basis. We are also going to have our interventionist plan remediation lessons with teachers and the instructional coach to work with students in small groups to remediate deficiencies. Goal number five is about our students with disabilities. We'd like to see them increase learning gains from 14% to 25%, working towards meeting the federal threshold of 41% achievement for this school year. Our strategy is to help teachers learn how to plan assignments in different ways, to read and apply IEP accommodations, and collaborate with the ESE teacher to design targeted instruction. We will be providing in-house professional development. Actually, we already provided this professional development during pre-planning. Teachers were trained on how to become more familiar with the different types of accommodations and how to assist in differentiating small group instruction for students with disabilities. This was led by our ESE team. We are monitoring lesson plans weekly for ESE accommodations, and we are looking at what is written in the lesson plan and comparing it to what we're seeing in our walkthroughs. We're also monitoring students with disabilities as a separate data group for in-class summative and benchmark assessments to make sure that their needs are being met appropriately and that progress is being made. Our sixth goal is to increase proficiency from 60% to 65% proficiency for fifth-grade science and from 36% to 55% proficiency in eighth-grade science. The strategy is that teachers will learn to develop targeted instruction using data as well as the standards and item specifications for the NGSSS and to use, to learn about and use evidence-based strategies that will be implemented, such as differentiated instruction, integrating reading strategies into science, and ongoing progress monitoring. Teachers will be receiving progress professional development from the company Savas on the use of Elevate science curriculum materials. They will continue to learn about the science standards and use their data to create targeted lessons for student growth. Our interventionists will be planning remediation lessons with the science teachers specifically as well, and the instructional coach will also be assisting them and students in small groups to remediate. These teachers will also be completing the data protocol summary, focusing on positive connections and making decisions about their instruction for reteaching and differentiation. And administration will be conducting walkthroughs to look for evidence of the database decisions and provide feedback. This screen has the data analysis that I, that we used in order to create the goals. We see that the data shows a need for improvement in math foundational skills and problem solving, and that ELA data shows a need for improvement in reading comprehension. There are several factors that contributed to this performance, and the primary component that we found is that there are gaps in academic knowledge for students. Specifically in science, we saw that the scores dropped from 2019, from a 70, to 2021, to 27%, and then now down to 18. And we believe that students' difficulty with reading comprehension affected student achievement in science and in the problem-solving for math as well. This screen is talking about our overall approach to the overarching school action steps. In order to accelerate learning and reach proficiency, we've added a second instructional coach and a paraprofessional interventionist to assist with the process. Our targeted interventions will be provided in order to support students in making learning gains towards proficiency. We have a paraprofessional that's going to be scheduled into the lower-performing math and intensive reading classes in order to work with small groups in middle school. The instructional coaches will pull small groups and help teachers plan for and implement the use of core curriculum and high-yield strategies. This is along with their coaching cycle. And teachers are also providing extended-day after-school tutoring for both math and reading. Here on the left, you'll see our in-house PDs from the administrative team and our coaches that focus on how to support them in-house. And on the right side, we have our professional development calendar that shows the monthly PD support from our curriculum team and Savas. Okay, these are the things that we're doing to make sure that everything that we've talked about is happening with fidelity. We are having team meetings, weekly teacher morale boost to make sure that the teachers are excited, to keep learning. We're using their feedback surveys, and we're using data analysis from the progress monitoring, the PM one, two, to make sure that we are revisiting those decisions that we made and make adjustments if necessary. Okay, and in conclusion, I'd just like to focus on why I'm confident that my school will meet the school improvement goals. Due to the fact that COVID has calmed down and that we have a new sense of normalcy, it's wonderful to see that our teachers are comfortable participating in school activities. Everyone is coming together again and embracing a more engaging and positive school culture. Due to the increased morality of school, teachers are excited to attend conferences and further their professional best practices, which is something that we saw kind of slip away from us. Teachers are embracing the coach's support, and they're motivated and invested in bettering themselves so they can improve student achievement. Parental involvement continues to grow throughout the school. Parents are excited to attend engaging and informative activities such as our curriculum nights, Hispanic Heritage, Parent Academy nights. They're already asking about our Black History Living Museum for February, and many more activities that they just weren't participating in before. Teachers are seeing the value of data chats and their effect on student achievement. They're actually coming to me before a scheduled meeting saying, hey, I want to show you my data. So that's always a positive. And at our baseline PM one, our data is already showing that we are at or near in standards across several grade levels, something that we did not see last year. At this time, if you have any questions, I'm ready.
Floor is open for questions. Board members have any questions? Member Felder?
Thank you for your presentation. I know that was a lot to try to put it all together, and everybody wants whatever they're in charge in to be successful and to do well. I just have one question because as a teacher, I used to have issues with professional development. I used to loathe them sometimes, but I'm just being honest. So one of my questions, what are your teachers' attitudes toward this? You said you're going to do a PD that will include remediation, help teachers. Sometimes we do need to have a remediation and teach us how to teach better, how to, you know, approach a certain strategy that we probably have some difficulty with. So what's their attitude about receiving that help?
Thank you for the question, Member Felder. Actually, I am really, really happy to see that the teachers are very positive this year about the professional development. They're actually asking for more. We have a lot of young-to-the-profession teachers that are craving the additional support. So they are asking us for more, which is the reason. So what we did at the beginning is ask them, what are their interests? What do they want the professional development to be in? And then we chose based on those things. So they're excited to go, which we hadn't seen in the past. I understand where you're coming from and.
Yeah, I'm glad you answered, you know, and told me that because one of the, one of my principals at one of my schools, he allowed us to make a suggestion about what we needed, what kind of professional development we wanted to see. And the suggestions I made, then he said, okay, can you lead it? I said, I'd love to. So, and I mean, you know, because sometimes when you do that, then they see the, not only the relevancy in it, because you do need professional development, but there's growth, and that's, that's part of it, you need to grow. One question, and you may have gone over it, but you said the SWDs. Were you not, were you not monitoring them anyway differently, or what, how, what was going on with that?
So they have been monitored in the past, but we did struggle with teacher retention in that area. And so we are more closely monitoring them. We do have support for the ESE teacher, but I feel that they require more. So we are, we're, I didn't, instead of just having them give me information, I'm using, just like we're doing data chats for the teachers, they're going to also be involved in those.
Yeah, I know, that's maybe across the board, not just in charter schools, but we do as a district and as teachers and administrators in the district, we must find more innovative ways to engage our children like that and then to encourage teachers who are working with our students to make sure that we're getting the optimum potential from our students and that the attitude, the attitude has to be, this is what I want to do, this is not a job, this is, I'm doing something and I'm working toward a goal of improvement. So I wanted, I asked that question because I, I wanted to make sure that the attitude was in the right direction so that you can see improvement with your children. All right?
Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Any other board members? All right, let me ask for clarification from Mr. Moody. Mr. Moody, what action, if any, do you need from the board?
Great question, Madam Chair. So I think this evening, we'll just need consensus from, from this body as an approval. In lieu of it going on a school board agenda, consensus will suffice.
Approve of their plan at this stage?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone on the board who doesn't approve of the plan? All right, you have consensus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Orange County Prep.
Thank you all so much for being here. And we.
And we wish you the best of luck for all of our, our students together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your support.
All right, Ms. Emble. I am not exactly sure why the work session is scheduled to open as a new meeting. Can we roll right into the work session?
We can.
Okay, good.
We thought there might be a division in between the two.
Pardon me?
We thought originally there might be a division in between the two.
Time, okay.
Right, time-wise.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if this was one of those kind of taking one hat off or something, but-
No, I mean, you can, you can officially start the rule development work session of the meeting, that would work, for the record.
Okay. Got it.
All right. See that little arrow there?
Yes, ma'am, you need to wait. Okay, so we have a late moment moment over there? All right, so I'm going to announce that up at the moment. Okay? Okay, good. Okay, thanks. And it's late now, I'll just see if they're- Okay, if the board's ready, we're going to move into our work session today. Today, the Rule Development Workshop is scheduled for the purpose of discussing the rezoning of 47 EW4 and 97 ESE2, a technical rezoning of The Ridge and a targeted of Tupperware Heights. I do want to announce that we had two earlier advertised work sessions that are not going forward tonight, and if somebody can help me with the number, thank you. Dr. Vasquez?
We have pulled the rezonings for Site 129M Southeast dash two and Site 50, the High School, the Southeast District Two. We will, we had quite a bit of community input on the models that we put out, and so we will begin the process again. We will advertise our community meetings, gain input, and come back sometime in the 2023 year with new or revised models for us to look at.
All right, thank you very much. So if there's anybody here for either of those schools, I just want to be abundantly clear because I would hate to waste anyone's time, we won't be, we won't be taking any testimony on School 50 or School 129. Okay? All right. With that, I'm gonna, I don't think I need to take roll call because we have done that already as well. So I just want to remind the public that if you're speaking, if you come up to speak, speak directly into the mic. I don't see an opportunity, where are the, where is the public going to speak, I wonder? Hang on. Do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, I assume we have.
Madam Chair, we do have one person. We do not have any callers, and we did not receive any emails.
Okay.
But we do not have a card on that speaker, so we'll ask them to fill out a card.
Okay, yeah, we'll need you to fill out a card. You can do that when you're done. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay. I have a long script I could read to you. Bottom line, be polite. To everybody else here, if you don't like what he has to say, be polite and stick to the topic, and we'll be good, okay? All right, with that, let me call on our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, as you mentioned, we are looking at two rezonings and two targeted rezonings, I am, one targeted and one technical, my apologies. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Neal, who oversees this process, and she will begin our presentation this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Vasquez. Once again, we're here. I'm Stacy Neal, the Director of Student Enrollment, and I want to thank you for joining us for the rezoning Rule Development Meeting of two relief schools, a technical and a targeted. Prior to beginning our presentation, I would like to introduce student enrollment staff who, who are here to present with me this evening. Thomas Moore, our demographer, Dr. Andy Westerman to my right, Renata Parabche behind me, and Amy McCormick. This evening, we are bringing forward options for one technical, one targeted, and two relief schools. Tupperware Heights, The Ridge, 47 EW4, and 97 ESE2. Sorry, I am driving this too. First, I would like to talk about the Relief School Naming Convention. All relief schools have a unique name that follow a specific naming convention. In this example, 47 is the OCPS real estate number, E shows that this is an elementary relief school, W is the West Learning Community, 4 is the board member district. School board, all school rezonings, no matter how small, follow School Board Policy JC. A quick review of the eight steps of this policy. Steps one through four, staff with approval from the superintendent begins the process with the creation of a timeline and meeting with internal stakeholders. Staff conducts research and data collection, then creates possible option or options for rezoning. Step five, staff holds a community meeting to present options, explain the process, and answer any questions. Step six, the Rule Development Workshop. Step seven, the public hearing. Step eight is in regards to the Housing of the Rzony notebook. At both rule, at both the Rule Development Workshop and the public hearing, the community is invited to speak. So now I would like to describe the scope of the rezoning. We use the terms technical, targeted, and relief. Technical, no students are involved. Targeted are selected areas and recommended to be moved, and there are students involved. Relief school zoning, a new school is opening. This policy is adhered to whether we rezoned for a new school, a neighborhood, or vacant land. The timeline for this rezoning, we held the community meeting on September 20th, the Rule Development Workshop is tonight, and the public hearing will be December 6. We have also provided the timeline when the specific rezonings will be in effect. Tupperware Heights and The Ridge, if approved, will commence for the 2023-24 school year. The four, sorry, the two relief schools will commence for the 2024-25 school year. Grandfather transfers. Grandfather transfer is in place to ease the rezoning transition. To be eligible for this transfer, a student must fit one of the following three criteria: rezoned two or more times by OCPS during a school level, so that's K through five, six through eight, or nine through 12; rezoned from an existing school to an existing school; or their fifth, rising fifth or eighth graders rezoned to a relief school. Family may, families may apply for the grandfather transfer on the student enrollment page of the OCPS website. The deadline for applying for the grandfather transfer is April 30th of the year the school is opening. Transportation is not provided, and each student must meet the transfer eligibility. This next slide shows with the community where they can find the information on our So they'll go to the OCPS website, student enrollment, and go to transfers. We also have a rezoning website, and on that site, there, they can find information, such as the online surveys. But it's the current rezonings on the OCPS website, followed by the timeline, community meetings, this input surveys, and we divide each rezoning by school levels. The maps and options are also there, and once approved, the board-approved rezoning map is there. So now I will, I'm sorry, all input will be provided to the school board members. We provide the school board both a summary of the responses, and we provide a copy of the emails, petitions, and a spreadsheet with survey data. Any duplication of input is not included in the totals. We do, we, we did request the input to be submitted and by close of business Friday, October 14th, in order to have for the school board members to review for the, prior to the Rule Development Workshop tonight. At this time, I pass it over to Dr. Westerman, who will present Tupperware Heights.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'll be presenting the technical and targeted rezoning today. The first rezoning is the technical rezoning of Tupperware Heights. Tupperware Heights is split between Endeavor Elementary School and Oakshire Elementary School. Please review the map to, where you can see the red lines represent the current elementary school zones. The area we are proposing to be rezoned is in yellow, along with the adjacent property. Currently, there are no OCPS elementary students residing there, and it's expected to generate 110 elementary students. The recommendation is to move the targeted area and the adjacent property from Oakshire Elementary to Endeavor Elementary School. This will allow for the entire development to be zoned for the same school. If this rezoning is approved, this is how the zones are going to look. The purple area is Endeavor Elementary School, and the green area is Oakshire Elementary School. This rezoning again would commence in August 2023. The second rezoning is the targeted rezoning of The Ridge. The Ridge is split between Apopka Elementary and Wheatley Elementary. Please review the map where you can see again the red lines representing the current elementary school zones. The Ridge development is the yellow area. The area we're proposing to be rezoned is the hashed area, along with the adjacent property. There are currently no OCPS elementary students residing in the targeted area, that's the hashed marked area on the map. There are two elementary students residing in the adjacent properties. These areas are the colored salmon or pink on the screen. The targeted area expects to generate 95 elementary students, and the recommendation is to move The Ridge and the adjacent properties from Wheatley Elementary School to Apopka Elementary School. This will allow for cleaner lines and for the entire development to be zoned for the same school. If the rezoning is approved, this is how the lines are going to look, the zones are going to look. The purple area is Apopka Elementary School, and the green area is Wheatley Elementary School. This area of the targeted rezoning is also split between Apopka High School and Wakaiwa High. Please review the area where you can see the blue lines represent the current high school zones, and the area in yellow is The Ridge. The hashed area is the targeted area. There are currently no OCPS high school students residing in the targeted area. The targeted area, though, expects to generate about 20 high school students. The recommendation is to move the targeted or hashed area from, from Apopka High School to Wakaiwa High School. This will allow for the entire development to be zoned for the same school. If the rezoning is approved, this is how the zones are going to look. The purple area is Apopka High School, and the green area is Wakaiwa High School. This rezoning would commence in August 2023. There is no community input for either of these two rezonings. This concludes this section of the presentation.
Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We now need to see if there's any members of the public?
Any members of the public that wish to speak to the board on either of these? Okay, we'll move on.
All right. Our first relief school is 47 EW4. Our demographer, Tommy Moore, will talk a little bit about the growth in, the growth in this area. Tommy?
All right, to start off with, I want to orient you with this map. The colored areas shown will be included in all of our growth maps, and there are projects in our geographic database of planned residential projects. Currently, we maintain the status of about 600 residential projects district-wide that are either planned, plating, or underway. The new school site is in Horizon West, which has been the fastest-growing area of our district for some time. We've seen a growth of approximately 16,000 students in the past 15 years within Horizon West. 47 EW4 will be our sixteenth new school built in this area. This map is split into three areas, north, central, and south. Here in the center is 47 EW4, is positioned between Waterspring Elementary to the north, or excuse me, to the south, Panther Lake Elementary to the east, which opened this fall, and Hamlin Elementary to the north, which also opened this fall. So if you look to the north map on the one on the left, in the Hamlin zone, the hatched area in the south part of the Hamlin zone is Hoxmore, a development called Hoxmore. North of Hoxmore will be the location of Toll Road 516 interchange. This is an east-west road that will run from 429 over to the US 27 westward. Now, looking down around the school in the center map, we anticipate that the residential construction in immediate proximity will be completed prior to the school's opening in 2024. So right now, we're in a unique position where we would want to open the school full or nearly full, knowing that the rezoning would be done for 47 EW4. And by done, we mean no more planned rezonings or relief schools for that school. However, to the south, Waterspring Elementary will continue to get growth. We have plans to relieve it again with an elementary school down there, 126 EW4, which is currently in our plan for 2027. Next slide. Okay, this is a zoomed-in map of the area. You can see here the challenges of setting an attendance zone because of the proximity of the two elementary schools. The red area just south of the school is undergoing construction now. The new Waterspring Middle School is located in the green area just west of Waterspring Elementary School. In between 47 EW4 and Waterspring Middle, that whole green area will be continuous homes. Okay? So now, Dr. Westerman will present our proposed attendance zone options for the new school.
Thanks, Tommy. So for option one, may I orient you with the map? The red lines are the current elementary school zones. The left side of the map is the Lake County line, and the bottom is the Osceola County line. The area in yellow is the proposed new school zone for 47 EW4, and the map includes Waterspring Elementary in purple, Hamlin Elementary in orange, and Panther Lake Elementary in green. For each school, the comment bubble contains information such as the school's permanent program capacity or PPC, the proposed resides for the, for the option presented, and the projected resides for the 2024 school year. Starting with the new school, the PPC is 791, proposed resides is 752, and projected for the 2024 school year is 960 to 980 students. Waterspring Elementary has a PPC of 791, with a proposed resides of 500, and for the 2024 school year, 870 to 890 students. Hamlin Elementary has a PPC of 791 as well, with proposed resides 485, and projected for the 2024 school year, 710 to 730 students. The third zone, Panther Lake Elementary, has PPC of 79, 791 also, with proposed resides seven, sorry, I'm sorry, 574, and projected for the 2024 school year, 545 to 565 students. The next map shows in, shows a zoomed-in area of the current elementary school, lines in red. Again, the area in yellow is the proposed new school zone- for 47 EW4. Waterspring Elementary in purple at the bottom, Hamlin Elementary School in orange at the top, and Panther Lake Elementary School in green to the right. The table here shows the impact of creating this zone. The first column shows each of the school's permanent program capacity, or PPC. All are 791 for the school design. The next column shows the enrollment as of 21522, with a percentage of white, black, and other, as well as a percentage of non-Hispanic and Hispanic. The only school open on 21522 was Waterspring Elementary School, with enrollment of 1,290 students. Percentage has 82% white, 6% black, and 12% other. Also 56% non-Hispanic and 44% Hispanic. The third column shows the current number of students residing. That's 620 for Hamlin, 758 for Panther Lake, and 933 for Waterspring Elementary Schools. The fourth column shows the proposed projected numbers for when the schools open in 2024. For example, for 47 EW4, the proposed resides is 752, with 83% white, 8% black, and 9% others, 55% non-Hispanic, and 45% Hispanic, and looking at 960 to 980 projected students in 2024. You can review the numbers for the other schools in the next three rows. The final three columns represent other demographic information currently and for the proposed opening in 2024. FARMs stands for free and reduced meals. ESE is for the exceptional student education, and ELL stands for English language learners. You can see for Hamlin Elementary School, the FARMs currently is 12%, and proposed is 13%. The ESE is currently 9%, and would remain the same at 9%. Finally, the ELL is currently 12%, and would change to 9%. You may review the numbers for the other schools in the other three rows. I'll give everyone a moment to review these numbers. For option two, the red lines are the current elementary school zones again, and these are the same schools, starting with the new school. The proposed resides is 661, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year is 800 to 820 students. Waterspring Elementary has proposed resides of 500, and for the 2024 school year, an enrollment of 870 to 890 students. This is no change from option one. Hamlin Elementary has a proposed resides of 485, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year of 710 to 730 students. Also no change from option one. The third zone, Panther Lake Elementary, has a proposed resides of 665, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year of 700 to 720 students. This next map shows the zoomed-in area of the current elementary school, lines in red. Again, the area in yellow is the proposed new school zone for 47 EW4. Waterspring Elementary in purple at the bottom, Hamlin Elementary School in orange at the top, and Panther Lake Elementary in green at the right. Option two differs from option one in the area zoned from Panther Lake Elementary School. The area along State Road 429 remains in Panther Lake instead of going to the new school, 47 EW4. The table shows the impact of creating these zones for option two. The first column shows each of the school's permanent program capacity, or PPC. All are 791 for the school design. The numbers change for 47 EW4 and Panther Lake Elementary School, leaving the numbers the same for the other two as option one. I'll give everyone a moment to review these numbers. All right, on to option three. Again, the same schools, and starting with the new school, the proposed resides is 568, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year is 770 to 790. Waterspring Elementary has a proposed resides of 500, and enrollment for the 2024 school year of 800 to 820, a change from option one and option two. Hamlin Elementary has a proposed resides of 485, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year of 710 to 730. No change from option one or option two. In the third zone, Panther Lake Elementary has a proposed resides of 758, and projected enrollment for the 2024 school year of 810 to 830 students, a change from both option one and option two. The next map shows that zoomed-in area of the current elementary school, lines in red. Option three differs from option one and option two in the area zoned from Waterspring Elementary and Panther Lake Elementary School. The area in the south, along the county line, has more area going from Waterspring Elementary to the new school, 47 EW4, and there is more area around the lake and along State Road 429 that remains in Panther Lake Elementary School instead of going to the new school, 47 EW4. Here, the table again shows the impact of creating the zones for option three. The numbers change for 47 EW4, Waterspring Elementary, and Panther Lake Elementary, leaving the numbers the same for Hamlin Elementary School, the same for all three options. I'll give everyone a moment again to review these numbers. Okay. This map shows all three options side by side to see the zones and the areas impacted by the different options. If you look at the yellow along 429, you can see that changes, so some stays in Panther Lake, and along the lake. This slide shows the zoomed-in areas of the three options to see the areas impacted more closely. Finally, this data table shows the broad numbers of students residing currently, and the projected number of students in the 2024 school year for each of the three options. You can see that Hamlin Elementary is the same in all three options. I'll give everyone a moment for everyone to review the numbers. The input from the community shows for option one, six in support, 67 opposed. For option two, 29 in support, 44 opposed. And for option three, 44 in support, 29 opposed. The superintendent's staff recommendation is for option three. This concludes my presentation. Dr. Vasquez?
Madam Chair, I believe we have a speaker to this proposed rezoning. Thank you. Welcome, sir, if you can come forward to the mic. Oh, yeah, you'll need a mic. I'm so sorry. Waited all that time, and no mic. Welcome, if you don't mind giving your name for the record, an address, but you're not, it's not mandatory.
Yep, my name is Charles Hassel. Address is 16943 Wing Spread Loop. I'm a happy resident of Horizon's West, and I've seen this brief before, so thanks for the transparency and giving this brief before. And also thanks for everything that you all do. We know in Horizon West, it is fast-growing. We appreciate the new schools. They're needed, and we know you all are doing a lot of work to make those things happen. So with that, thank you. Also, I just came here. I also agree with what the presenters are presenting. I just wanted to say, please don't select option one. It provides an overcrowded school by 200 kids the day it opens, and nobody would be in favor of that. But option, I was gonna say option two or three are good with me, and if they recommend if you all approve option three, I'm a happy camper, and that's all I had to say.
So let me take a minute just to say thank you to you for engaging in this whole process and for sticking with it to the near end, and being the only one here to speak. We really appreciate hearing from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Member Gould?
So yes, thank you. You know, option three does make sense for multiple reasons. One is obviously the distribution of students. Our goal was to be able to lock, kind of lock down the school and not continue to have transition. We can't.
Lockdown's not a great word.
That's true, that's true. Right-size the school, so we wouldn't continue to have transfers and transition out of it, which is rare that we've been able to really do that. But remember, I just want to remind the rest of the board as this comes before us for its final leg of the journey, that we do have more elementary schools coming, so we really want to go where the growth is and minimize that impact. And I would strongly encourage any of the parents who are listening to really look at the transfer options, that grandfather transfer for those who are uncomfortable with the move or have moved multiple times already and want to solidify it for their kids is a fabulous option. We've done it a lot in Horizon West, and the community becomes very cooperative at carpooling.
All right, thank you, Member Gould. So, Member Gould, you're in favor of moving option three forward?
Yes.
Okay. We're not going to take a vote here today because we wait until the final hearing for that. But any concerns by any board members that are here at this direction we're going? All right, thank you. All right. Next, next development.
Okay, so now we move to relief school 97 ESE2, and I'll let Tommy begin.
Mr. Moore? Okay. This area was the second fastest-growing area in our district, with about 12,000 new students in the past 15 years, with eight new relief schools built so far. We have three relief elementary schools in our current plan. The one we will be discussing today is 97, which is opening in 2024. The school site is adjacent to our current Innovation Middle School site, and we will be providing relief to Sunblaze and Moss Park Elementary Schools. The area around the school is vast, and will be growing on a timeline well beyond 10 years. In the vicinity of 97 ESE2 is Story Park, which we have about 2,000 units left, based on our estimation. Just starting now is Meridian Parks, which is an approved development of 6,500 units. And starting in about five years will be Sunbridge, and that is approved for 7,304 units. Renata will now present our attendance zone options for 97 ESE2.
Good evening. 97 ESE2 will open August 2024. We have three options to present today. Let's us take a look at our first option. The red lines represent current elementary school zones, and the colored areas are the new proposed zones. The south side of the map is Osceola County line, and to the right is the County Road 13. Rezoning for 97 ESE2 involves Vista Lakes Elementary, Sunblaze Elementary, and Moss Park Elementary. Vista Lakes Elementary is not impacted by the student movement. Only students from Sunblaze and Moss Park are affected by this rezoning. The yellow area is the proposed new school. Green area is the proposed Vista Lakes Elementary. New Sunblaze Elementary is in purple, and new Moss Park is in salmon color. Each text box includes name of the school, school's permanent program capacity, number of students currently residing in the proposed zone, and projected number of students at the time school opens. Next slide is the zoomed area for the new school and Sunblaze. Then we have also the table with numbers. And as Andy presented before, first column has school name and permanent program capacity. Second column shows student enrollment as of February 15, 2022, with percentage of white, black, and other, and non-Hispanic and Hispanic. The third column lists current number of students residing in the existing zone. The next column shows number of students currently residing in the proposed zone with the breakdown of race and ethnicity, and projected number of students in 2024. The last three columns show numbers for current and proposed farms, the free and reduced meals, ESE, exceptional student education, and ELL, English language learners. I will give you a moment to look at the numbers. Option two. Option two, as option one, includes Vista Lakes, Sunblaze, and Moss Park. On the next slide, you can see the zoomed area and the difference between option one and option two. And the next slide is the table for option two. And option two will increase enrollment in the new school, decrease number of students in Moss Park, and leave Sunblaze with the same number as in option one. And option three is based on option one with a slight difference in Sunblaze zone that is being moved to the new school zone. Let's take a look at this zoomed slide. And then we have the table with the numbers for option three. And option three will reduce enrollment at Sunblaze. And we have all three options next to each other. Then the zoomed maps. And the option overview with numbers of students currently residing in the proposed zones and the number of students projected for 2024. We received community input. For option one, 58 families are in support. 10 families are opposing. For option two, nine families are supporting, and 59 families opposing. For option three, 35 families supporting, and 33 families opposing. Superintendent's staff recommendation is option three. Dr. Vasquez, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Renata. Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers at this time. Do we hear any comments from school board members? And this is in Member Lopez's district? Can I see the next-to-last slide up again with the comparison of the three schools?
The data table or the servant?
No, no, this is what I want. No, that was what I wanted. Not that, yeah, that slide.
This one is the staff recommendation, and...
And don't you have a slide that compares all of them?
Yes.
Can you bring that slide up? Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So, you know, and I've been doing this long enough that I know the numbers. So, um, you know, and I've been doing this long enough that I know the numbers are not always the, the answer to the, to the problem. So not being as familiar with Member Lopez's area is the reason the, um, some of the schools would remain a little higher in population because of communities and roadways, keeping communities together and roadways.
That, that is, uh... That is largely the situation and the growth in the area, but we're trying to keep communities together.
Right, and that's always hard because we are a land of lakes and weird roads and weird development distribution, so I figured, but when you see, you know, some schools staying a little bit higher in their, in their growth. And what's the generational growth there? Do you, do you have projections out?
It's pretty high. Sun Blaze, the reason, and I think you're talking about Sun Blaze is a little high, isn't it? One of the things that's happening in that vicinity is we have that new high performance charter in there, and our concern is if we move too, too many students, this is gonna be the last opportunity for Sun Blaze. We can always move more out later. But if we, if, I don't want to under-enroll the school if they're really start getting impacted by that charter.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for the insights.
So a follow-up question. The community support was greater in option one, is that right? Can we go with that?
Fifty-eight supported.
Yeah.
The others?
This one's current. Yeah, so I, I was looking at one versus three, and I can see going back to the numbers why you're at three. Let's go back to the numbers again.
Okay.
Huh? Yeah, but, but the community likes, at least based on that, the community likes option And the big difference with option one is its impact on Sun Blaze. Correct? The reason you picked option one over option three?
So there is not a big difference between option one and option three. When Stacy goes back, the difference is, if you look at option one and option three, the only difference is along the Dowden Road, the little community that's sitting on the north side of Dowden Road, we are proposing to stay in option three with the new school. And if we look at the, um, at the survey results, there was only one person actually from that little community asking to be put into, to go with option one. And there was no other, there was no other response from that community why they prefer option one versus option three, actually.
Okay, so I'm sorry, it's a little hard to hear you. What is the reason that you're recommending three over one?
We're recommending option three to lower the numbers for Sun Blaze, to keep them lower, because as you, you were able to see on the overview slide, Sun Blaze still stays over capacity. Even though they might be impacted by the new charter school, they're still higher than the other schools.
Yeah, so that was what I said a minute ago. I was asking, that's the reason you're going with three is because of the higher numbers on Sun Blaze? Yeah, they may come. You know, we are a little bit of a disadvantage that we do not have the district representative here. And the, I'm inclined to go with option three, but I do think that we need to recognize that we may have community pushback, and I don't think that option one, um, I would say three is the better. Option one is second place, and option two is third place, so... Can we move two of them forward?
So you are not voting this, today, you're just, we're trying to kind of consensus to what will go to the board. If the board would like to bring two forward, we can do that, and that will allow time for Board Member Lopez to also weigh in at the board table.
Okay, and that gives us the option to choose either, that the next meeting will, we will finalize of...
December 6.
Okay, and we can do both of them. Thank you very much, Vice Chair, for that suggestion.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to point out that the meeting is December 6, so it will be a new board member.
Huh?
We'll have a new board member.
Welcome to the board. I don't know what to say. It will be baptism by fire, that's a very good point. It would be preferable for somebody to have been in that seat for a while, but I still think we're better off bringing both forward. Yeah, okay. All right, so there's consensus that we should bring both forward. Appreciate the hard work on this. All right, and what, that was it for us tonight, right? Okay. So feels a little funny, but it's 5:47 and I can adjourn the meeting? All right. How's, how's that sound, John? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you all so much.
For the record, it's four to one Yankees in the fifth inning.
Not that anybody's paying attention.